Good evening, everyone. It is a pleasure to see y'all all. And with that, we will call to order the Monday, February twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-four regular meeting of the Prairie Grove City Council roll call.
Rick Hall.
Here.
Rick Clayton.
Here.
Sue Cluck here. Tony Cunningham.
Here.
Paula Dipmars.
Here.
Bree Gregg. Chris Powell.
Here.
Doug Summow.
Here.
Before we go on to the first item of business, everyone should have a city ordinance in front of them. That reflects in your new business, item E. In your agenda, it says resolution for a new tile in the Prairie Grove entry area, which is what we're talking about, the lobby here. The actual thing that we'll be talking about tonight is an ordinance to authorize us to do business with Councilmember Rick Clayton, if, uh, if the bids come in in that way, but we'll discuss that here in a little bit. And so if y'all want to just change that to E, which is an ordinance to do business with Councilmember Rick Clayton. And with that, we'll move on to the State of the City address. And I will tell y'all, for everyone, it is not, my comfort level is just to do this, just to have fun and talk and, and kind of go off the cuff. And that's what I did last year. Forty-five minutes later, we were still talking, so, um, I took Councilmember Cunningham's advice, and I wrote the speech this go around. I practiced it twice. It should take us about fifteen minutes. The problem is, there's no emotion in me reading from a piece of paper, so I apologize for the lack of emotion. I'll do my best to keep y'all entertained in that fashion, but with that, I appreciate everyone being here, and this is our State of the City for two thousand and twenty-four. I'd like to start with updates from our previous year. We issued one hundred and sixty-eight residential permits, forty-one permits for residential additions, three commercial building permits, two commercial additions were added, one hundred and fifty commercial, fifty-two residential business licenses were registered in the year of two thousand and twenty-three. The planning commission approved one thousand one hundred and eighty-nine residential lots in the year of two thousand and twenty-three. This was a slight decline from nearly fifteen hundred that was approved in two thousand and twenty-two. We saw a twelve percent yearly increase in sales tax in two thousand and twenty-three from our previous year. We continue to be on record pace year after year as it comes to our sales increase. Our employees were given a five percent wage increase. We gave a six percent wage increase to all titled supervisors. This is important for us when we look at our title supervisors because we want to be very influential on the idea that leadership matters. And so we wanted to give more to the leadership of Prairie Grove than just our average employee. We want to impact leadership here. We want to do the right things from the top on down. The fire department saw an increase of over twenty percent as we matched pay schedules plans similar to, similar to other cities our size in Northwest Arkansas. This follows a year in which all employees received an eight percent increase in two thousand and twenty-two. You should see lower pay raises this coming year as me and Larry's plan is to add reserves into our two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five budget year. We did not hire any new employees entering the two thousand and twenty-four year. Still, we added additional hours to Melissa Dobson of City Hall, Janet Gardner of the Water Office, and Administrative Sergeant Mark Skates of the Police Department. Chief, Chief of Police Chris Workman is continuing his partnership with the DLA program. We hope that the benefit of the DLA program will be a huge, would be huge to our city. Last week, he received a generator that will provide backup power to the police department and the expansion that we'll soon talk about. This action alone saved the city an estimated sixty thousand dollars. The eight point nine million dollar wastewater expansion is almost complete. This will expand our capacity limits by fifty percent. That fifty percent will allow us to continue to grow our city for years and years to come. That is a great addition to our wastewater treatment plant. Downtown construction has started, as we all know. Construction and change is very stressful, but the results will be excellent and will provide long-term growth and prosperity to the downtown area of Prairie Grove. We witnessed Casey's and Taco Bell open the doors on a bypass in two thousand and twenty-three. And today, we're hearing rumors of interest from other businesses surrounding commercial use. I believe it's imperative to understand that we are excited about the growth of our bypass while still investing in an eight million dollar improvement plan to our downtown. Remodeling our downtown streets has been a four-year labor of love in which the city council has rightfully voted for this investment. The results will be a thriving downtown and a flourishing bypass. Here in Prairie Grove, we are a bypass and a downtown destination. We are walking trails and dog parks. We are Saturday morning farmers markets. Thank you, Mr. Al. And Saturday night street dances. Thank you, Kay Shreve. We are a growing city with small-town charm. We are the Battlefield Park, the Clothesline Fair, and the Downtown Cocoa Crawl. We intend, we attend Tiger Football on Friday nights and speak of those victories at one stop on Saturday mornings. We are blessed to be an attractive city in one of the fastest-growing areas of our nation. Now, we'll give you some emotion here. I think that one sentence can preach. I, I think if I had to give you a State of the Union in one sentence, that is it. Do we understand the impact of that one sentence? We are an attractive city within one of the fastest-growing areas of our nation. People want Prairie Grove. People want what we have and who we are, and they want to be part of our identity. I, as an outsider, wanted to be part of y'all's identity. People are coming here, not just to Northwest Arkansas and droves, but they are coming to Prairie Grove and want to be part of Prairie Grove, Arkansas. We, once again, are blessed to be an attractive city in one of the fastest-growing areas of our nation. We are eight thousand four hundred and growing. We are blessed to live, work, and raise our families here. We are Prairie Grove, Arkansas. We'll, we'll continue to build our area and around the state. Dr. Campbell is here with us tonight. The school has purchased land on a bypass for future growth. They are expanding the school district with educational buildings and athletic facilities. Our relationship with the school district is as strong as ever, and I will continue to build on that cornerstone. Councilmember Chris Powell, who's to my right, hosted three parks and recreation committee meetings in the year of two thousand and twenty-three. The committee, along with Mr. Powell, are committed to progressive ideas and long-term growth. With your help, we expanded Money Fork Park, buying bathrooms and new playground equipment. We are looking, excuse me, we are working with the school district to improve our tennis courts and our baseball and softball fields. We're also currently getting quotes for Pavilion at Mark Fork. Last year, we reinstituted the Buddy Lyle Citizen of the Year Award by awarding Mass. Sonny Hudson as the two thousand and twenty-three recipient. We started a new award classified as hometown heroes to honor the citizens who serve our community. I was honored to join the Board of Main Street Prairie Grove. I had the privilege of replacing Mass. Sonny Hudson as the Vice President of the Central EMS Executive Committee. The Arkansas Municipal League has appointed me to the Advisory Council for First Class Cities. I am working alongside Mr. John Wilkinson of the, uh, the Arkansas Municipal League on Act Thirty-Eight Committee, which reviews the state's role in the breakdown of payments within our district court systems. Our Chamber, our Chamber of Commerce President, Mrs. Golden and I, started a four-year education through the Commercial Development Institute at UC Ag and Conway. We are currently partnering with CDI using grant funding towards research to help promote growth in the city of Prairie Grove. You should see some of those results coming soon. Mrs. Golden and I are meeting regularly to promote not only the Chamber of Commerce, but the city of Prairie Grove and new business ventures for our city. We will continue to build and strengthen our commitments to the city of Prairie Grove, the Washington County, and the state of Arkansas. We are not just the eight thousand four hundred residences of Prairie Grove. We're also an essential part of the six hundred thousand of Northwest Arkansas and the three million of the state of Arkansas. Our decisions here in Prairie Grove are felt throughout Washington County and the state of Arkansas. This is who we are. We impact the world around us. Once again, we are Prairie Grove. We will start some new and vital ventures in the year of two thousand and twenty-four. The Business of the Month will soon begin with the help of Mr. Larry Ulrich and Councilmember Sue Cluck. Councilmember Bree Gregg and I will bring the Prairie Grove Junior Counsel to our area. I am currently teaming up with Mrs. Cindy Love for the One School, One Book Initiative to promote the importance of literacy to the children of our community. Last month, Councilmembers Bree Gregg and Doug Stumble were appointed to the FOP Committee alongside Chief Chris Workman. City Councilmembers Paula Dipmars, Doug Stumble, Tony Cunningham, and Mrs. Sue Cluck was appointed to the Police Department Expansion Committee in two thousand and twenty-three. With their help, we hope to complete a one point two million dollar expansion of our police department within the two thousand and twenty-four calendar year. Councilmembers Paula Dipmars, City Clerk Christine Kelly, and I are working hand in hand with the Prairie Grove Senior Center on a three hundred thousand dollar grant to assist them in building improvements. Last month, Councilmembers Doug Stumble, Rick O, and Paula Dipmars was appointed to the Prairie Grove Water Committee to work alongside our Administrator Chuck Wiley to research long-term ideas for our water department. The Prairie Grove Trash Committee is up next and will be led by Councilmember Sue Cluck to help research our long-term goals for our trash services. I will soon set up a committee to assist with Prairie Grove emergency planning. These are just a few activities that you will see in two thousand and twenty-four. We are all committed to the growth, prosperity, and excellence of Prairie Grove. Aristotle is quoted as saying, "We all what we repeatedly do. Excellence then is not an act, but a habit." In closing, I cannot speak of the excellence of Prairie Grove without speaking of teams that bring success to our city. To our admin team, your work does not go unnoticed. The countless hours that many of you do not witness, I do. I recognize that the city's success is because you love the citizens and your goals are to bring prosperity to Prairie Grove. I cannot thank you enough for your sacrifice and your dedication to the city of Prairie Grove. To the admin team of Prairie Grove, thank you. To the department leaders, your pursuit of excellence, your commitment to rising expectations, your daily walk of self-improvement, and the development of your staff are second to none. We have much work ahead of us, but your support in building structure and dedication to never accept compromise will bring this municipality to a great future. You accept the stress of leadership. Your work never ends, but the results will be seen long after your role in Prairie Grove is completed. To the leadership team of Prairie Grove, thank you. To the workers of Prairie Grove, I cannot speak enough of how you've risen to new levels. Whether we have a two A.M. water leak in sub-zero temperatures, a rescue effort that puts the lives of our first responders at risk, a plow in snow-covered streets so daily trash can be picked up. You show up every day with a smile in preparation to serve your community. What greater love can be expressed than to serve the citizens of Prairie Grove wholeheartedly? To the workers of Prairie Grove, thank you for the love and service you provide. To the planning commission and to the city council that's sitting around me today. Your life is a dedication to the betterment of our city. You study, you examine, and you battle through every decision. You are willing to give up your family time and your time of relaxation to serve. You serve your community with integrity, with dignity, and with a pure heart. Your commitment to excellence drives me to better, to be a better leader. To the planning commission and city council leaders of this city, thank you for your dedication and service to Prairie Grove. And finally, to the citizens of Prairie Grove, it is with great pleasure and honor that I serve this community. My career is an opportunity to confirm the trust that you had in me fifteen months ago on Election Day. I will strive to be the best leader for our beloved city. I will serve, I will serve the community of Prairie Grove with sanctity of heart, a spirit of faith, and a never-ending endurance. Nineteen years ago, I landed in Prairie Grove by the grace, by the grace of God. As an outsider, I was adopted into the family of your city. I am forever grateful for the love that you have shown me. My goal then, and still today, is to return that love to the citizens of this great city. From the depths of my soul, thank you for loving me, accepting me, and trusting me with your hometown. And for the last time tonight, we all Prairie Grove. Thank y'all. That might have been thirteen minutes, Tony. I appreciate y'all entertaining that, and hopefully it gave y'all the information that y'all not only want, but y'all deserve to know as far as the direction of our city. With that, we'll open up to public comment. Is there any public comment? Here and none, we'll move over to the approval of minutes for the January twenty, excuse me, for the January twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four regular meeting of the Prairie Grove City Council. I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Pose same sign. Minutes are approved. Treasurer's report was sent out by Mrs. Kelly. Do we have any questions or comments? Here and none, the report will be placed on audit. And our unfinished business, um, A is a city ordinance to amend the food court regulations. Last month, we had a first reading of this ordinance. We've also taken some of the critiques that y'all wanted changed. We have changed those. Most of them is the fact that I can waive the requirements, uh, for special events. Mobile eating courts cannot utilize equipment that presents a loud, continuous noise as the generators, loud speakers, public address. We changed the amounts of the permit fees that y'all have access to change, and we moved the, the location from one hundred feet to two hundred feet from the entrance of the door to the existing permanent restaurants selling the same product. Is there any questions or comments, or would y'all like to put it on second reading?
The only question that I would have is when we say selling the same product, is it may not be a one-to-one match? So if you had food services that sell drinks and all of that, just, there could be some confusion as to, is it any of the same products or all of the same products? So I don't know the answer to that, but just something to consider.
Since we're only on second reading tonight, and we should come back for third, is there a way that, that we possibly can word that?
You can't cover every situation.
Right, yeah, no, so, so what, what?
I put in a, for example, a taco vendor may not locate within two hundred feet of a restaurant selling macaroni. Or a pastry vendor may not locate within two hundred feet of an establishment selling pastries. So I tried to just give some examples, but.
Yeah, I just want to recognize that there could be some decision that's, uh, that's made.
And I think from an administration point of view, first of all, handles these calls, and I won't be the first to implement that. For example, if somebody came in, a vendor, let's say it's Christmas time, is located next to Magnolia Coffee, delicious stuff. And they're going to sell hot chocolate and coffee, but they're going to sell other things. We probably ask them not to sell the hot chocolate and coffee that directly competes. Sell your other stuff, you know, whatever you're selling that doesn't compete, but restrict those two items. I think we had that conversation.
Yeah, I'm not proposing any change. I'm just saying that observation, there could be some friction.
There, there aren't going to be any perks, look right here.
That still stays his call, right? Or is it absolutely?
That would be probably during the average of the process if that would take place.
That was.
I would imagine it matters a lot if they close. So if we're doing an after-hours project in Magnolia, since Magnolia was brought up, if Magnolia's not open to serve coffee or hot chocolate or whatever it would be, I don't, I don't, I don't believe, I don't see why it would be, uh, an issue at that point. Because you're not competing.
A good example, Magnolia usually does stay open for events, but Mel's doesn't. So if a burger thing wanted to open up after nine o'clock or six o'clock, probably wouldn't be any problem because it's not. I think that's the only consideration we give is whether or not it's directly competing or not.
Was it in there with their permission?
There is permission in the ordinance if they, if they get permission.
Do you have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Here and none, roll call.
Rick Hall.
Yes.
Rick Clayton.
Yeah.
Sue Cluck. Tony Cunningham.
Yes.
Paula Dipmars.
Yes.
Bree Gregg.
Yes.
Chris Powell.
Yes.
Doug Summow.
Yes.
An ordinance to amend the city's food cart practices.
Right, or we don't go on? I have no recommended changes. I just, just an appreciation that there could be some decision being made at administrative level of what's saying is moving on. Let's put a rules wave third reading and stop the word.
Do you have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Roll call.
Rick Hall.
Yes.
Rick Clayton.
Yes.
Sue Cluck.
Yes.
Paula Dipmars.
Yes.
Bree Gregg.
Yes.
Chris Powell.
Yes.
Doug Stumble.
Go. Moving to item B is a discussion to rename Highway one seventy to Walnut Grove Road. We don't have, we don't need a resolution anything on that, but I do think we need a vote in minutes if I'm understanding correctly. And so, does anyone have any objections to renaming it to Walnut Grove Road? I know we talked about. We don't.
It goes all the way through, yes.
Will the street name?
It'll switch.
It'll switch.
We, we had a discussion about that, Rick, and, and the problem is our address grid doesn't match up with Farmington's address. So you would, you'd run into a situation if we kept the same name as Farmington, for example, where you might go from eleven hundred block to the nineteen hundred block because that's where theirs is. And so it made more sense, just for clarity, where the city limits is, is to make it Walnut Grove Road or Walnut Grove. I think it's under one hundred is Farmington, is that right, Jay?
Yeah. Would you anticipate any signage at that location that would be the?
There'll definitely be signage, like coming back into Prairie Grove, it'll say, you know, beginning of Walnut Grove Road or something like that. Kind of like they do in festivals, what I would anticipate.
Is there any impact to the residents as far as mailing address?
Oh, yeah.
So, how significant, what's that friction look like?
Well, just as an example, we just spent the last two weeks readdressing West Sixty-two to begin, street somewhere. Did you get a letter? No, because you were already at that first. Okay, everybody past you still had Highway Sixty-two addresses, so you were one of the lucky ones.
Do we know the number of residents impacted?
The letters we sent out the other day were probably a dozen. Just guessing here, but it'll be less than twenty.
Move to approve. If you got another question. Is there a cost associated with the?
No, we sent a certified letter, just letting them know that it is officially changed and why. We explain the lines.
Then buying signs, of course.
Yeah. We'll have to re-sign it, but that's probably ten signs tomorrow.
So I do have a motion and a second. Um, all in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
Pose same sign. Motion passes. Thank y'all. Um, on to new business. We have a city ordinance to approve, to approve the rezoning of Highway sixty, uh, a property on Highway sixty-two from A one to B two. This is Southern Storage on sixty-two. Property's about seventeen acres. It's actually what's on our screen on the backside. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Ulrich if you have any questions. This was approved in our planning commission on Thursday.
Does everybody understand where this is at?
Can you paint me the picture?
Yes.
Okay, so this, this is the medical clinic out there in the, this is where the new Southern Storage is. That's the nice white storage facility. So this is the land back behind it. This driveway actually connects over to Herbivix Road, or is it property actually connected? It's our driveway there, but this is right behind our. But this is the property that lies back here, and plan is the storage facility wants to expand, and they're going to do a couple of different types of storage back there. It's, Mattel has to come back and buy for, uh, a large scale development when they do that. There were several property owners actually at the meeting, and there were joint developers, and not one of them opposes, which probably. In fact, one of them said that's better than some things that still lack there. They like that better than apartments.
Larry, keep me honest, in our new land use, the storage buildings needed to be in an industrial zoning? That is not.
If this had been for, and he knows this, if this had been three months from now, he probably would not have been able to do this. So, under the current zoning, it's allowed, and that's the game, the rules that we're playing by right now, so it is allowed, and, uh, I think probably from a standpoint of, you know, storage buildings, it's probably better to don't go in than maybe something else somewhere else on Hundred and Sixty-two or.
Urban Beaks.
Um, Urban Beaks. He is planning any buildings that face that direction will have the white brick on them, just like they've done on the Highway Sixty-two times to make them look more commercial than storage.
But at this point, it's just changing from agriculture.
We discussed a lot too that there's not a lot of other options for that. I mean, like, no one's going to put like a strip mall or a shopping center back behind, so if there were a place with, for storage units, uh, this is actually it.
Yeah, it's actually.
Best case scenario, I guess.
At this point, we're not even, that matter if it's storage unit or not, we're just changing it to business, from agriculture to business.
And that's what the land, the new land.
Can you explain or run over maybe what you discussed with him about the phasing?
Yes, and I think, I think you probably saw the email. In, in the new ordinance, there's going to be some language about limitations on, uh, conditional uses. So he, he has to get a conditional use to have a storage building, even in B two, don't he? I'll have to come back and add to the meeting. In the new ordinance, if he doesn't do anything eighteen months, uh, conditional use goes away. So if he was to sell that to somebody else and nothing got done in eighteen months, well, then it would go away. What I suggested to him, because he's planning on coming back with a large-scale development plan, is to show all those phases, get it all approved at one time, and move on from there, and that way there won't be any question. Because I do understand if you're, if, if you think you might sell the property, uh, that would be a blow to go through this process, get it all approved, and then have us say no.
As long as it's large-scale done before the ordinance.
As long as he gets it all approved ahead of time.
It's there.
Yeah.
Now, now, uh, business owners are here, if we have, if y'all do have any questions.
I'm just really curious, is there like a huge demand for more storage units?
There must be.
I'm very curious, because we're trying to be quite alive, and so I'm just wondering, like, is there really, did you, I'm very, very.
Yes, surprising. It's this America, you know, only in America has this happened. But, uh, I, I certainly would build them if there was a demand for them. The first phase on Sixty-two, if there's any guns to it, that's just under five hundred units or so, and it, it's already, it's not full. I mean, they're never full because they're month to month, but the man is there for a while.
And you said the other night, I think that the first phase is it's going to have about two hundred.
I looked at it today, it's two hundred and forty-four units. And people want bigger and bigger units.
Are they Prairie Grove residents, or are they like from, I'm just very curious?
Oh, people bring them?
Or do you even have information on the demographic?
I do, I do. I don't know it specifically, but, uh, storage is a very local business. I mean, outside of three miles is, is not much. You know, everyone's, you can't put them on sale, you know, people rush the dogs, the machines. They deal with it, they didn't. They usually see a driving by.
A lot of stuff.
I'm just surprised.
You can do that kind of on the, month or figure, right?
Yes.
And that's, we get a lot of calls for that all the time.
Yes.
Some of your plan included like an enclosed, uh, structure, is that correct? Remember like the garage style doors and windows for RVs or boats or?
Yeah, it's basically that open some, that would have a, uh, insulated door. So most closet units are inside that little rollerboard. This would be a. So most closet units are inside that little roller board. This would be a oversized unit so you could put a larger RV, people could, you know, run some kind of contractor, uh, storage out of it. Um, but that's that's a huge thing also.
They look more like a commercial building.
Right.
Yeah, it's a commercial building.
Yeah.
Let's put a rules play to order the first ring title alone.
Second.
I do have a motion and a second. Any further? Roll call.
Rick Hall?
Yes.
Rick Clayton?
Yes.
Sue Pluck?
Yes.
Tony Cunningham?
Yes.
Paula Dipmarsh?
Yes.
Free Greg?
Yes.
Chris Powell?
Yes.
Doug Stumble?
Yes.
An ordinance to provide for rezoning of certain lands in Prairie Grove, currently owned by Blackberry Line LLC. Modification of the zoning map and amendment of the zoning ordinance.
We further spin the rules way a second. They're agreeing to adopt the ordinance.
Second.
Again, I have a motion and a second. Any further? Roll call.
Call?
Yes.
Rick Clayton?
Yes.
Sue Pluck?
Yes.
Tony Cunningham?
Yes.
Paula Dipmarsh?
Yes.
Free Greg?
Yes.
Chris Powell?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you, counsel. And with that, we'll move to item B, which is a resolution to approve the twenty twenty-three budget or to amend the budget from the fiscal year of twenty twenty-three and reconcile our expenditures. Thank you, gentlemen. Have a good night. And to reconcile our, uh, expenditures from from the previous year.
Most of you probably remember, we do this every year. Even though we do it in January, we didn't go to our bank statements until a little later in January, so we didn't. But basically, the auditors require that we reconcile two thousand twenty-three budget to the exact figures for expenses and revenue and adopt that as the twenty twenty-three budget. So it's kind of silly, but it's an audit requirement.
Just out of curiosity, Larry, what was the differential of the reconciliation of budgeted?
I'm not sure I was having that much detail, Rick, but I can tell you offhand. It's slightly lower. I can't tell you which line I'm just getting higher or lower without.
Do you have a motion and a second? All in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. We have a resolution to approve the standing operating guidelines of the fire department or for the fire department. Um, J C sent out an email that kind of goes through a a quick explanation of it's just a something that needs to be done. And but if y'all have any questions, I'll I'll chief to see if it attends anything, but it's really just the guidelines for operating procedures.
This is brand new thing?
No, it's something we've had. Parker just pointed out that, or Parker, we know that.
Policies should really be adopted by the council.
Okay. I didn't see any red marks as long as asking if it was new or.
We added a ride along.
We added a ride along.
Policy and, uh, and I, he had sent me this ride along policy. Our department to help like some, you know, guidelines, policies, like the police department. He said, yeah, we've had it for a long time. I don't think. The council is there for. I've approved it, but the council should be the ones who approve city policies.
It all made sense when I read it.
But we're just staying.
Bringing it here.
Who sent that?
Huh?
Like with an email?
Yeah, I mean, Chris. He named it up with the title of Monday.
Do you have a motion?
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second? All of. Rick Clayton. So I do have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. We have a resolution to waive the competitive bidding and purchase a mini excavator for the city of Prairie Grove. Chuck Wilding?
We were looking at replacing a piece of equipment or adding some equipment since last year. This particular excavator runs about ninety thousand dollars. And, uh, it was a lease model that the municipality had turned back in and one of the officials that had put the track on when they get. So this is, uh, it's got right new track, three buckets in the twenty twenty-one model. That's sixteen hundred hours on it and that's still a warranty for next year. And so it's been taken care of by the next. But if it's a year fifty, it's not inside a million of them get down and put chat set up. The one that more digging capacities and, uh, they know the.
Is it really in Jackson, down in Mississippi? Okay.
It's actually here. It's it's up at Strilling. Mechanical up there on, uh, wagon.
I just saw this with invoices.
Well, that's where their main office is.
Oh.
But when they called, they called me at like six o'clock at night when it was delivery. He said, I know you're looking for one, so here it is. And he said, it will be here in twenty-four hours. So if you want it, you can actually.
He said, well, I mean.
It, uh, normally about ninety thousand would give him forty-six. Forty-six five. That's what we added a twelve month warranty.
Mr. Parker, does that opportunity help justify waiving the competitive bidding? That's the only thing that I want to be cautious with.
Yeah. I mean, well, it's hard to bid used equipment. As I said, you can't, it's hard, you know, it's not apples.
From an auditor perspective, Larry, you wouldn't anticipate any friction on that.
No, not at all. That's, I think every time we bought a piece of used equipment, we had, we had to go. It's kind of, don't, don't look to get towards.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. It makes sense.
You come off these deals when they present.
Even if it's at six at night, huh?
Yeah.
We can do a pretty resolution to waive competitive bidding.
Do you have a motion and a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. We are on item E. This is what we spoke of earlier. This is not a resolution for new tile for the police department. There should be a city ordinance that was placed in front of you that city ordinance is to authorize doing business with council member Rick Clayton through Clayton Tile. It is for the tile for the police department entryway. Um, what we're asking you to approve tonight is something that has been approved in years past, but it just allows us per project to say that we can do business with a city council member if he is the lowest bid. Uh, he's the only bid that we've gotten so far. We we should receive another bid later this week and Lowe's will be here on Friday to be the third in that proposal. And so this is not necessarily to even conduct business with Rick Clayton. This is only so if they're the lowest bidder, we can conduct business with council member Rick Clayton through.
We hit this very exactly.
Yes.
We have some of the smart parents today to be on with fast, but we don't.
Do you have a motion and a second? Any further? Roll call.
Rick Hall?
Yes.
Rick Clayton?
Same.
Sue Pluck?
Yes.
Tony Cunningham?
Yes.
Paula Dipmarsh?
Yes.
Free Greg?
Yes.
Chris Powell?
Yes.
Doug Stumble?
Yes.
An ordinance to authorize doing business with council member Rick Clayton.
First in the rules, wait a second, third, bring it up, order it.
Do you have a motion and a second? Any further? Roll call.
Rick Hall?
Yes.
Rick Clayton? Sue Pluck? Tony Cunningham?
Yes.
Paula Dipmarsh?
Yes.
Free Greg?
Yes.
Chris Powell?
Yes.
Doug Stumble?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item F is a a discussion on the sale of the parking lot behind Main Street Buildings. Um, I think Larry, Larry, did you send this to to the council members? Yes, I thought you did. If not, here's, there's a copy of it if you need it. But this is a half acre property owned by Larry Nelson that is directly behind Southern Merkin Till. In the past, he has talked to Larry Oridge about maybe putting a business back there. This is part of a property that is used for public parking. And so ultimately, if he sells it or uses it, then we could potentially lose a a pretty big portion of our public parking back there. He did send Mr. Oridge and myself an appraisal and for that half acre of land, it is appraised at eighty-eight thousand five hundred. And so we have a, uh, a decision to make or at least a nice discussion point on what y'all want to do about the. He's given us first option and so.
Just if if I put my Main Street Prairie Grove hat on, um, the loss of that parking space and sort of the egress and ingress of that area where Larry has that land um, would cause a significant disruption should there be something built on that site taking up the that that parking area. So, uh, just from a, a downtown business perspective, it would cause a disruption if that land were to be used for something other than a park.
But from conversations that myself and Mr. Oridge have, we believe the same thing, a hundred percent. We don't think that we should pay eighty-eight thousand five hundred dollars for it, which is where y'all come in on whether or not we should counter offer, but we should let it. Just trying to choose what he's asking.
He's asking for less.
I have a question. How much of that parking lot do we currently own?
You know, anybody have a map? You can see on it, the park. Just like a dog.
Larry, when you're doing that, the building that is on the green space behind that parking lot, is that included? I don't think it was, but I think it's in the in the lot line.
Here, calling this, the only thing we don't know is.
It looks like the lot line cuts that building in half.
Yeah.
Showing it would be.
Yeah.
The outside half of we own. And then Daisy's and all of those eight spots.
The only reason I ask is. If we're sending.
Yeah, and I remember looking.
Well, just, I mean, it would be nice if they were all like, you know, Larry and Karen, they just gave it to us. We paid for the survey that, uh, they gave.
And we have a huge building and park. We own the alley, so he could not lock the alley.
I'm feeling if if we didn't buy it or if he wasn't to sell it or if he wasn't to do something, potentially.
And that's what I like to clarify. I like to clarify that.
Do we, do we obtain the building, that small building on the backside of the property if we look to buy?
Yes.
Okay. It's a cinder block.
Garage doors.
It was used, it was the first recycling building here.
Yes.
Senior Center. Well, like I say, it was the first recycling building.
So from a, Larry, from a logistics process, would a survey be done first to make sure there was no ambiguity to the lot lines or what does that look like?
Well, we would, we would definitely do a survey. If he hasn't had one recent, I haven't researched that and see if he has. We've had a recent survey on, he's right next to it.
Right.
So we would probably use Alan Green to continue that survey. He should have some of the old already. I think we need to make sure the land that's represented there is.
I know, Larry, you do a good job of sharing with us how tight things get financially. Timing's not great on this. How would we pay for it and what's that?
You would have to take the money out of reserves and just bring the reserve down further. I think we still have four hundred thousand in reserves even if we did this. So I mean, it's not catastrophic at any means, but.
And would we, do we have a, we have a plan to build that reserve back up?
Yeah. We always have a plan.
It's the end goal, to see if it works out at the end.
Yeah, there was the survey last.
Oh, really?
The money we budgeted for earlier this year, you would think.
Right. I'd mainly be concerned on the survey since at least what you look online, which I know you can't trust, it divides that building in half as I'd want to make sure there's.
It looks like it cuts off maybe a foot.
Okay.
At that building.
Gotcha.
Right behind us.
We can, I was gonna say, we can talk to Graham Nations about maybe donating a set of, I don't know. We'll talk to Graham about that, but.
Well, that's a lot of money is, in my opinion, is I I think from a stability of Main Street, it's probably a, an expensive but a good investment. The other pieces we've gotten are pretty small. I mean.
We've got two pieces in the last twenty years. One of Larry Nelson did because he he did us a, did us a piece right in the middle. It was just a square. And basically, he didn't feel like he wanted to pay proper tax on it anymore. So he asked the city if we take it and did. And then the strip behind Larry Crowley's, they did us two years ago. We did the survey on it and they just did it over to us.
Do we have art behind crescents and all of that too or not?
We've owned it for years.
That's where the water.
Yeah, that's where the jail is. We, the city's on that for as long as anybody can.
Larry, was it an all or nothing though?
You mean, will he take this, sell this part of it? I doubt it. And and the reason I say that is because he's, he is wanting to generate enough money to pay the rookies out of all that building right now and pay the building up. He said, if I can get that much out of it, I'm going to use that. So he basically told me the dollar amounts what's important to him.
Could he have owned all that parking behind him?
Everything but a tiny square behind David and all of them.
Yeah, Mark, we've got it. Is this a big enough lot you could put a building on, couldn't you? I mean, if you.
He's already, he's already in part about building a building back there, which would take enough to afford you to do that.
Right. And respectfully is, if if we don't, I believe he could sell that if he wanted the money and somebody would likely put a building up because as we know, that mock street corridor is a growing corridor and would be very attractive for somebody to do so.
Is it worth our money though to buy the land for the, I think Chris just counted up roughly forty spots or let someone build something and let the sales tax off of it?
I mean, really, I mean, you're, you think somebody going to build a building behind all the other buildings? We can face it tomorrow. Face it tomorrow. I mean, still, my.
So so let's, so let's talk about that. Let's get a little bit open because we lose, ultimately, that's what we do. We lose parking spots.
Right.
So where else do we get parking for downtown? And so hey, hey, Powell, because that's a, it's a good point. And so the discussion is we lose parking spots. Sue, can you tell me about how many parking spots we'd lose?
I counted twenty-five points fifty.
About fifty? And so the question becomes where do we get fifty parking spots that we could add into?
Every time I've ever been downtown, I've never seen a bay park in this area. In the back. It's always over here.
Where it's, where it's kind of important is during like special events. I mean, that parking lot is completely full.
You think he's bluffing? You think he's really going to build a building back there or are you just trying to get a spot?
I I think he's going to put it up for sale because he indicated to me he needed the money to get the improvements he was having to make.
I'm by no means saying that this is the answer. Just asking a question and and y'all two gentlemen can help us. So the Chamber of Commerce building is, is wrapped with grass. And if if we concreted it or blacktopped around that, how many parking spots do you think you get? And how much does that cost to blacktop that area compared to seventy-six thousand dollars for that?
About the same. I think we're going to do our.
Yeah, we left.
You're going to have a high excavation cost on that area just because all that topsoil is going to have to be removed before they even start putting in.
I'm just, I'm just trying to think of what we do own and where we could get parking and how does the price match? Or if we just go back to Mr. Powell's statement of the parking spots doesn't matter. And if he wants to build on it, let's get sales tax. The only negative is we lose fifty parking spots. So then we have to start deciding if fifty parking spots is worth seventy-six thousand dollars or if we could build it cheaper during our own parking off the fifty spot.
How many spots you think we're going to gain out of the, uh, restoration of, you know, the industry restoration?
And some of the changes, I think we we possibly produce.
Okay, so if we do deem this important because of the proximity of entrance and exit essentially, we're also saying the same of Martha's down here at Daisy's and all of us.
Now, we do own the alley. We own a twenty foot strip where the alley.
Right, they get through.
So.
Right, but it's the, I mean, if we say that's important because of where it is pulling in parking lot and we will give them this money because of that, Martha can also say, well, I own the other side pulling into parking lot and I'm going to put, yeah. I don't know. I think it's not a bad idea. I think it's a whole lot of money and not a lot of gain.
No, we don't own anything on the other side of the street, like behind any of those businesses.
Is it all school property or mostly school property?
Mostly school.
K U on a little bit of it, don't you? The parking lot behind you.
The locals.
On the north side.
I did not.
Yeah. Yeah.
I did.
So. Well, since, since we're bringing that up, and, and maybe Dr. Campbell doesn't know, since, since he's only a few months in, but isn't there some greenery behind, behind the, the actual parking lot that the school actually owns, that potentially we could buy from the school versus buying this and obtaining the same? Yeah, you want, you want that track, don't you? Well, I'm just, and I'm just.
I, I know, I know Campbell's got a tiger drill.
I'm just asking, just, what if we, I mean, we're setting kind of, kind of the breeze board, we're setting the prison, we'll buy it. You know, Mark almost.
I mean, there is other options, you know.
What happens to that side, what happens to the other side of the street? Okay, that looks.
Yeah, you lose some green space, which would be a lost at Downey County Prairie Grove, just to be.
Where, like, you know, are you?
Where we have events sometimes. There is room where the school parking lot is, probably extended, possibly.
But then you're making people walk across the street instead of go to the.
You sell it first, the land.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh.
What?
What do we even know, I mean, seventy two, the, is that the firm price?
I don't think he's going any lower than my discretion with him, but she's always offered.
Was it seventy two or seventy?
I'm thinking of seventy two, what did I say in my email?
I've actually said seventy two, but I.
That's what I called.
Apologize, I'm the one that said seventy six.
It would be twenty thousand square foot.
It's, tonight's just a discussion, so y'all can move on to discussion, we could counter, we could tell them that we want thirty more days to think about it. And if he sells it in thirty days, I guess he sells it in thirty days, I mean, that's, we, it's, it's, it's on tonight's as a discussion for that reason.
He would sell it to somebody else, or I think you asked me if you thought it was bluff, I don't think he would go under the profit of the trouble of surveying it, getting appraisal, if he was like to do something with it.
Parker said that survey's a month old, so I mean, it's.
And appraisal, he had talked off the press when he wrote it.
Right.
So I'd say he's in the, in the market.
The market's offloads of property, I don't know.
And the other side of, so, so the other side of it is, and so let's, let's say you're a hundred percent correct. I- is there an amount that makes it worth the game? And, and that's where you often, all we can, I mean, look, in the end, all Mr. Nelson can do is say, no, it's too low, I'm sorry. And so theoretically, we can say no to him, nope, it's not worth it, or we can go in and say, it's worth fifty thousand dollars.
So who is the appraisal then?
So right now, right now, it's at about fourteen hundred and forty dollars a parking spot.
It is a lot of money, it's just, to defend what Mr. Alt was saying, it just happens to be in the right spot, do you want to see the appraisals? That's, I think that's the only reason we even had this discussion or entertain it.
Does he have a mouth spec?
I think he came up first.
I appreciate him coming up first, now, yes, I think he could sell it for that elsewhere. The, the little, and I mean this respectfully, the house that probably needs to be torn down next to the Chamber Building, um, is listed at a hundred and twenty some odd thousand dollars, right? One twenty nine.
It's not even through the shop in the back.
And, yeah, right, and it is a teeny tiny lot.
Plus an eight hundred square.
And, and we, city are going to invest, was it eight million dollars in downtown renovation? So that property value is only going to increase significantly. So I would rather buy it now than when it increases significantly.
That's, I mean, this is true, this is the business, the office, we don't know. So, so y'all, here's, here's the truth.
So I, I want to make, guys, I want to make a motion here that we let Mayor and Larry go in and negotiate, um, this price for this. You know, to see if we can get it maybe a lo- a little bit lower price, um, I just did some figures, and if we could get fifty thousand, it's only a thousand bucks a parking spot, that's four hundred and forty dollars. You know, I'm just looking at, trying to make it make sense of, of why we're buying it for parking spots. So I, I want to throw a motion out there to let, to negotiate the table, let's, let's let them negotiate it, and then if we need to call a special council meeting back, if they get some answers, then we can do that.
So I have a motion a second to start negotiations at fifty thousand.
I would say I'll throw fifty thousand out there first and see what they come back with.
I can't imagine.
But he'll come back with them.
No, but that's, that, that's part of business, is, uh, he throws out a number, we throw out a number, he potentially throws out. So we do have a motion, who was my second? And Rick Clayton's the second, so I do have a motion and a second to negotiate at fifty thousand, would this be? Do we just all in favor of?
Reach some kind of deal, we need to call.
Okay.
And Mr. Mayor.
Go, go ahead, sir.
In between that time, um, and maybe Larry and Chuck, uh, observe that building, uh, from a functional use perspective. Because.
A little building.
That building is included, so, you know, to put up a building like that is gonna cost you more.
And that's where.
We're just.
It would be good. Yeah.
Oh, yeah, it would.
Literally right on.
I'm not sure, we don't need to clarify that, we need a dollar a mile, because we don't want him to think if we go in at fifty, it's gonna be. I'll say for me, it's a no.
Regardless.
For any amount, because if I rainwater needs of the city, fifty K here still is not important to me, that's fine for other, I get it. But just in my personal opinion, so I would still vote no, fifty thousand dollars, and I don't know if he needs to know that or not, if we enter in negotiations.
But this does bring up interesting points, that we want to enter negotiations and potentially, he, he, he accepts, and we don't get to vote.
Right, he just got to know that, like, you know, we all go into it, to know that this, it's not a final thing, it was.
I will, I would say, so we will make that known to him, and I, and I do believe that if he counters or gives us a number that we've, or if he accepts, then we won't wait thirty days, we'll call a special meeting, and that way we can give him a answer that night or the next day. Is that fair?
Yes.
Okay. So I do have a motion and a second to start negotiations at fifty thousand, all in favor say aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion passes.
Yeah, that's, that's important because that, so.
These are pretty hard to do, I don't think.
I think we think that seven tours is, is.
You might come up.
Yeah, it's worth eighty thousand, it's just, it may not be worth eighty thousand dollars. Yes, sir. Well, we'll see if we can get in it, see if he'll show it to us, and see if we can just start that. Hey, y'all, since the motion did, since the motion will pass and we've moved on, let's go to item G, which is discussion on fireworks, because I have a feeling this may take just as long. So we, we did have a request, um, from a citizen that wants y'all to, um, to consider allowing fireworks to be popped all weekend during a July fourth celebration, or July fourth weekend, we're not too sure what that should, and kind of like this year, July fourth on Thursday. So, so is it, either way, they want y'all to entertain the fact of not having one day for a few hours, but to have prolonged celebration of fireworks. So, open discussion. And I do think our police chief and fire chief, this is opinionated when it comes to this one as well.
I'm going to vote no on this one, because we do, Prairie Grove provides a firework show already.
Do you think that's an important?
And so that's important, we spent a lot of money for this firework show, for them to do that, and right now, to me, they get popped off all the time anyway. You know what I mean, and it's like one of those things, it's constant, so if you're gonna put it into ordinance, and it's gonna be allowed, like, I don't think anybody really enforces it right now until somebody calls, you know, and complains about it. But it's, it's an annoyance, you know, for people that have to work, and then, not all the pet owners, but the, the, or the vet, vet, you know, the vets. And to me, it's, it's a weird holiday for me anyway, to, let's make everything sound like you were in war again, you know, to celebrate, you know, the veterans, but, um, the freedom of our country, but I just don't see the need for it.
Mayor, and I will chime in, um, and I agree with that, because right now, you know, we do it one day, um, we're gonna have three or four days we're gonna do it. Here, if we do it three days, everyone has a full week or two weeks we're gonna do it. Like, you know, of course, growing up, here, my kids, and that, you know, we have to go to the county somewhere else, and this has the same effect, I mean, we shoot them more. Um, but our calls go up, the animal, the lights get a little up, the friends of the towns here, um, I can tell you what they will be, uh, calling you home. And when, and we literally get called to the services over that neighbor's street, because this ain't a shooting fireworks, this one's gotta get up, and, and we it can get ugly sometimes, so, I don't know what J C, I think I know what he does, I think. Which, which I do see the other side as well, not to be a part of it, but I think it will create, um, a whole lot of issues.
But I, I do believe we recognize a lot of those issues, I think what Mr. Powell said, I think is a, a huge consideration, and, and what y'all, or the decision y'all make, is that the city already provides a firework show, if we didn't provide it, I think maybe things are different, and not only do we provide it, but we.
When do we do our?
You just mean this year, or this year, we're actually doing it the Saturday before, the Fourth of July. And then, uh, the show that's on Highway one seventy, Dylan Phillips and Living Faith Church, they're doing it as on Sunday, we were trying to get it on Fourth of July night, um, but it was just a conflict with Mr. Cook, as far as being able to, very similar to what you say, and his problem was getting enough workers to be there Thursday night, because they have to go to work Thursday and Friday, and so he can't get the personnel, so weekends better for him, but as far as our, what we would currently allow, we will allow citizens to pop fireworks on Fourth of July inside of our city limits, but only for that day.
See, I'd rather let them do it on the third, so, so it's gonna go to work on the fifth, don't have them all shoot it off on the fourth.
We're gonna, we're gonna do our show on Saturday.
Yes, sir.
Or the third. And then the Fourth of July is on Thursday.
That's correct.
I think y'all let them pop on both days.
Yeah. I think that, I mean, we're those people who do something with our family on the Saturday night, and then all together go to the city show. So I don't know, I mean, I don't fully understand the negative, but if the city is already shooting fireworks, and the noises are already going off, no one's louder than the boogie setting.
On Thursday's time.
But he's doing it Saturday, so I would, I would push a motion that it's allowed the night of the city fireworks, and that's it.
The one thing, just from coming from, just from coming from a first responder background, we don't have enough first responders to be on scene, what, what we're doing, and controlling traffic and issues out there, and in many cases, it's just them walking around, keeping peace, and chasing what's going on within the city. So that would be the one negative to, to what you're requesting, at least the one negative that I, that I can think off the top of my head.
Does it keep people from shooting them?
No, they shoot them all the time.
But if we had a week, a night designated on that weekend, we know.
I would just say like.
I will, I will say, because I've heard this comment three, three times, we had this discussion when we were talking about this staffing event, like, the people, they're shooting off all the time, days ahead of time, days after, we don't have. But there's an awful lot of folks in Prairie Grove that do the right thing, because it's the law, so when you make it legal, now those folks have permission to do it too, so you might have thirty percent of the people shooting them off illegally now, you're gonna have a hundred percent shooting them off all the time, so it's gonna increase.
Right, yeah, because now there's another day, and the four days after, that they wouldn't normally do another, you'd spend it. So.
So now all the honest people are gonna be shooting them off.
I don't see them shooting them off the third, but I'm gonna get up on the fourth.
Did you make a motion?
I don't think anybody made a motion, I don't think there's a motion on the floor.
Larry, did you make a motion?
I don't know.
Okay.
I was just saying, if I.
If you did.
If it was entertaining, or people like that, I mean, I.
The, the beauty, the beauty of this discussion is that we can continue it next month if y'all wanted to, and we can critique some of the stuff, and.
I've been, uh, she's been emailing me, I've written an email every, from her since last, what, the July, about the update, so that's why we pushed this, and I mean, really, I just wanted to be able to give them a better answer as to what the city said.
Great. So this is.
We want Parker to, we want Parker to go.
And they can't shoot them off the night that we shoot ours off, you're not gonna let them shoot off Saturday night?
Because that moves around, our, our show moves so much, the third and the fourth, it's.
So you're gonna, you're gonna let them shoot the third and fourth in, in segment?
No.
No, no.
No, just the third and the fourth. Just the third and the fourth.
Yeah, but they're just gonna shoot off New Year's, so, the players call me back, they, yeah, they should off of New Year's, I mean.
So it's gonna, it's gonna, it's gonna be in the first, second, third, fourth, and fifth, right?
No, this is the third.
Six, four, seven. It's definitely gonna be, hey, how about we have Parker just walk in and see what other cities around us?
Okay.
How about that?
Hey, y'all, let's, I'll tell you what, since, since we're going in a million different directions, let's, let's take another thirty days and think about it, and then we'll come back next month.
Yep.
And then we'll kind of see where we are, because we, we seemingly have three that doesn't want it, three that wants it here, and three that want it in a different direction, so. You, you good with that, Bryn? Well, here's, here's another discussion for y'all, so, item H, discussions surrounding the Juneteenth holiday. Um, so just some backstory, because I did some quick research today, so June nineteenth, eighteen sixty five was the date that the Civil War ended, and the final enforcement of the Emancipation Proclamation in Texas was on that June nineteenth, June nineteenth is now a federal holiday, yet has never became a state holiday. We have received just a few, and when I say a few, I'm talking about three or four phone calls requesting a change in our policy. Thus, we've had a few conversations within our admin team, we did, we have had a few of our own employees request the idea that we should have Juneteenth as a holiday, I do believe when they requesting it, they're asking you to give them an extra holiday, that is not what I'm asking you for tonight, I'll ask you to debate tonight. Um, but we do have, we have been asked to, to bring this before you guys, and just see what direction you want to take our city in. The, the one thing I will say, that if we decide to move to a Juneteenth holiday within our city, is that currently, right now, we have twelve holidays, or I thirteen, and the thirteenth is a floating day, which is the employee's birthday. Fourteen, and, and a fourteenth is the, the floating birthday. And so, all I would propose is if y'all decide to do this, that we would just move the birthday to Juneteenth, and that way, that's locked in, and they still get the same fourteen days, but it doesn't cost the city of Prairie Grove any financial hit by adding another holiday. Open discussion.
What federal holiday?
Choice.
No, they will not have a choice, so you just be. You won't get your birthday no more, you'll get Juneteenth as a holiday. Most, we heard, we understand that Washington County has made this decision, but that's the only one locally that has made this decision, so for, and they just added a day, because they don't do birthdays.
Okay. Some of them are federal holidays.
Some are state holidays.
If I'm understanding, I mean, the birthday.
The only, the only thing within the birthday celebration is that we, we ask you to take it after your birthday, so that way, if you was to quit or get fired before your birthday, you didn't steal money from us.
They can pick whatever day they want to there.
After that?
If we move that to where they.
In, in many, you don't take a benefit away from an employee in the idea that you've taken a day away, but you take the benefit of the floating holiday.
But this one will be floating, this will be.
It will not be floating.
So they can't pick what day they want, that's where you know, every year.
And theoretically, you can keep the floating birthday and add a day, I just think for the finances of, of the city, I don't know if that's the direction we want to go in. We, we give, we probably give more holidays than any, I know that anyone local.
Washington County, one every, Washington County has one for birthdays, you have to take your birthday holiday the month, month.
The month of it, okay.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it's like.
And yes, and that's another thing, the floating birthday doesn't force us to close City Hall office, but, once we move, if, if we were to move it to Juneteenth, then that day is, at that point, City Hall is, it's another day closed, it's another day with trash and recycling not being picked up, it's. It's.
But it could be a holiday, but it's not an observed holiday.
I thought on it, and I think, well, I'll tell you, the library girls reached out to me, because this came about because they had a performer. They were trying to schedule.
Yes.
And they tried to schedule the performer on June nineteenth, and they. From my understanding, the the performer was a little appalled that we offered that day because it's a federal holiday.
That is one of the employees that requested us to have this discussion.
Um, I think it brings a valid point, what does that look like in the public? For us to basically prioritize a birthday over a federal holiday? Well, there's lots of things that are not correlated between the state and federal, so we have to decide what's right or wrong. That's what I have to sleep on tonight. But I don't mean.
I can say if I was a reporter, I'd have a floater.
I'm not gonna lie to that, I don't think.
It's, we would, but if if going back to Bree's point. If you was to decide to to, in essence, add Juneteenth as a holiday, I'm just saying you have two options. And that's add another day, which means the city hall is closed, and financially speaking, it it costs the city money. We prioritize money on that one, or the easy answer, uh, maybe financially, the easy answer would be to. Move the the floating birthday. Is is that a perk for the employee? Absolutely not, the the perk for the employees to have the floating holiday. But I mean, it's, it goes back to that State of the Union address, right, we study, we examine, and we struggle through these decisions. And this is not an easy decision, but but it's one that has hit our desk.
And there are other holidays, I guess, that could be subsequent to the monthly federal holidays as well, like President's Day, Martin Luther King. Uh, Good Friday would be the exception, we do do Good Friday. So there's, there's two federal holidays you you do not observe, and that's Columbus Day and Juneteenth. There's four late holidays you provide that are not federal, and that's the day after Thanksgiving. Christmas Eve, Good Friday, employee's birthday.
Those are all state. That's what we do, the city.
I would much rather see us observe a federal holiday than shift the birthday to a non-federal holiday.
I can tell you, it'd be very unpopular to shift the day after Thanksgiving.
Right.
It'd be very unpopular to shift it to see.
But I mean, like, nobody wants to go to work the day after Thanksgiving, and ninety percent of the world goes to work the day after Thanksgiving. Or you have a personal day, I mean, that could be their birthday.
I don't know too many, I mean, lovely, I don't know any government offices that don't work on that Friday.
On that thing?
No, no Friday. Uh, Good Fridays, there are very few that are.
I I think, I'm just gonna speak as a ex-employee. I I think I'd rather have that day off than the day after Thanksgiving than the floating birthday. That's just my opinion, like, if you took away my floating birthday, you took away the floating birthday. But I think they look for those two days at Thanksgiving, those two days at Christmas. That's just an opinion of a ex-employee. Would y'all like to, go ahead, sir?
I think, Mayor, if if we end up not going with the Juneteenth holiday, I would encourage us to figure out. How we as a, because, Bree, I I think you're right, there's two things. There's the holiday for the employees, the associates, the free time for their family and all that, that's an important day. There's also a recognition of the city of the importance of Juneteenth. If we stay open, we should consider, how do we recognize as a city and actually, because. You know, Civil War obviously being a very important component to the history and heritage of Prairie Grove. How do we actually celebrate as a city, even if we're, our municipal offices are open, Juneteenth, to make that that statement? Because there are these two things of the day off for the employees, and the Bree's point. The message that we send for the support of the Juneteenth holiday and what that means.
Now, I might add another wrinkle, to kind of piggyback off of Rick, for us to, for you guys to think about. Which is, two of our employees have already taken their birthday. So if he was to make a motion this month, or next month, or any month between now and and June itself. That too could be five or six or ten employees, and so then you dealing with, what do we do with the ten employees that's already taking their birthday? So this may be more of a discussion on what we do in the year of twenty twenty-five. Than what you do in twenty twenty-four, and it may just be the start of the discussion on on what we should do going forward. Two employees right now, if he was to make it, we probably just figure out a way of dealing with the two employees. Because we made the decision to go forward, but the other side of it is, it's a discussion. And I do think that you take time with discussion, so we make sure that we make the right decision. It may be more of a, do we take the time and make that decision for twenty twenty-five? Rather than, rather than rushing the decision, because it's, you know, a four or five months away.
And it may be interesting to talk to like Kendra and see if the state is moving towards, while they haven't, is there, is there any conversation at that level? Is the state moving towards it somewhat now?
An outside discussion is, I've gotten emails about. Yeah, June nineteenth.
Well, unless there's a blizzard there in August.
Did you get one about fireworks?
Fireworks?
I told him to email.
So there's also a discussion about fireworks, I keep making this all every, shoot fireworks, and so that's a good thing we need to think about there. I I I emailed the guy back, he emailed us about celebrating to have fireworks and. And, you know, I talked to him, I told him that, you know, I'd bring it up and look at it, but as, you know, unless he's forwarding fireworks, I don't know where he's gonna get them. With your June nineteenth.
Does the state allow?
And we don't, we don't allow it, so, so, you know, he's one of us that has an ordinance where they're allowed to shoot fireworks, I mean. Um, which, to me, I don't, I don't, it doesn't really make any sense. Um, usually it's really dry then anyway, I mean, July, of course, it's even coming up too, but. But I don't know where he's gonna get fireworks from, and it'd be a handful of people probably shooting them off if there were. Um, I just don't, I don't see a need for it, but I want to put that in discussion too, because he, one of our citizens brought it up. So when we do discuss this stuff, we need to discuss if we're actually gonna let them celebrate the holiday calling, like how like they, like he wants to do it, like the citizens want to do it. Or just, yes, the employees are gonna have off.
And I, and I think, we go back to the fireworks discussion, if you're gonna add extra days to July fourth, and you potentially gonna discuss June nineteenth. And then Soligent Blue throughout New Year's Eve, and so like, where does that, where does that Pandora's box stop? Hey, if if Larry Orange ever really does retire, he runs the fireworks for Larry.
That'd be a national holiday itself.
Not saying we have to make decisions tonight, like we, I think we're going to party table this one looks like.
Yes.
This is my ignorance, but is that a recognized way to celebrate June nineteenth?
He emailed me and said, email Larry.
I told him he needed to contact you and Rick.
Yeah, I need your money back, and said, I'll discuss with the council, come up with a solution, and we discussed it and see what he, I said, please come down and talk to us. Yeah, he lives in the middle. And so, um, I thought I might bring it up to discuss it, and I let him know, so.
Is everyone good with table on this, in uh, another thirty days? We'll move to reports to committee, sentation, Sue Pluck. Yeah, it is a good report, Street Department, Rick Clayton.
Um, we've got a lot of stuff going on in the street department, unfortunately, we're up in Granite improvement. And, um, there's been some confusion about such a few two percent, we're trying to stay ahead of that. It's kind of dropped a ball today, because they did some changes on the signs and the equipment that we were aware of, so it's kind of. Problem issues with people coming and going in some directions they weren't supposed to.
Chuck, I had to get a call from a lady this afternoon, and I talked to her on the phone this morning. And she was very appreciative of how quickly they got the new signs up, and she said, she said, tell everybody, they're doing a fantastic job. And that she understands.
But Letty, that contacted me, was very appreciative too.
She was too, she was super, super nice.
Yes, she's very appreciative, but she's the one that told me that. Two tour signs were wrong.
Yes, and it was fixed, within just, yes.
Well, they appreciated their concern.
City crews, there weren't no sidewalks and street cuts, uh, tomorrow, they've got concrete water. We're going to work on one this week, um, starting to get ready to advertise and solicit bids for overlay projects. So then with South Mon, South Neil, South Pittman, and then Friday, we'll relay some of the beats. So yeah, that's, we need to get some good for that. So, uh, contractors are pouring drain inlets on burning road phase two. They said once they see that done, and they'll start doing some finished grading, and we'll start seeing improvements going early then. So that's, we're gonna do that sometime in the summer. About it.
Thank you, sir, Ward and Sue with Doug Stumble.
Uh, contractor of the wastewater plant expansion is starting site restoration. Uh, it's gonna be finished grading probably next week, a lot of that work. Um, they've got a couple pads more for civil entry equipment. Um, procuring, procuring or getting some other equipment is proving to be pretty lengthy, and so it's backed up for completion date of April. Because they just can't wait to come home to them, when we ordered them last year, they were fifty-five to eighty weeks out. So, it's, it's really running into a mess. They say they for sure will be shipped by the end of April, and they're gonna have their contractor standing by whenever it gets such. Hit on site, and we'll start installing within seventy-two hours.
The scary part of that is if anything goes wrong down the road, if you're looking at replacement signs. Semi-project that I said on the board for, hundred and twelve weeks for a transfer switch. Sometimes you can't wait that long. Hundred and twelve weeks for a transfer switch. So, uh, so yeah, there's a lot that's going on there, uh, instead of waiting for the records components. When it comes to the water, we've had some issues with the new billing software that we installed last year. There are a lot of people who have heard some stuff on Facebook and seen some things. We're trying to work with that provider to get those resolved. It's been a ongoing battle between our staff and new program technicians. We're hoping to get this fixed, but we gave them a pretty specific timeline to get all these issues corrected. So we may be looking at making a change within this year if they can get this stuff done. And so we'll be looking at different other providers of the company. Just wanted to put the word out there that we are trying to get fixed, they're trying to get it fixed, but if they can't get to where it operates, well, we need to operate.
And and just so y'all know, so if I can add to what Chuck's saying, is that y'all been fighting this probably since day one, so we've. We looking at the last nine, ten months of problems, and the problems, instead of getting better, seem to be elevating. And custom, not that the customer service is bad by no means, but there's definitely something, there's a wall blocking. Um, what they promised and what they have delivered so far, and so we're, we're working with them on that. We do have the Chuck himself, and Kalen is doing a a fabulous job researching. Not only our current provider, but what the, what local municipalities around us is using. And and then trying to study what our change would be. Our game plan is so for the, what they're coming in at bids would be lower than what we have to bring before the council. Our thought is, since we started that water committee. So, uh, the long-term goals of the Water Department is that as soon as we get some, some good information. Is we're gonna call Doug, Rick, and Paula to come meet with Kalen and Chuck, and that way we can kind of sit in front of you guys. Lay everything down, and that way we can start the process from now, and whether or not we can fix the problems that are in front of us. Whether or not we truly have to move in another direction, so hopefully, we we actually hope that within that next thirty days before the next meeting. We'll have enough information to to have a committee meeting, and to sit some of that information in front of you guys.
And hopefully, we'll have some good news from our heart providers, that they did have a path of these issues resolved.
Hey Chuck, before we move on, any, uh, reports of water quality issues since last meeting?
Nope, nothing at all.
Thank you.
Okay, they got the slug pump, yeah, or are they not for that stage?
They haven't went to that point yet, because the first one has to be fully operational, and that's one of the mixers, and it's not gonna be here.
They're waiting on your equipment and spec work.
That's a big mixer.
Yep, the big mixer, they, uh, it's the motor for the mixer that they're having to wait on. We've asked them to ship us the panel and all the other components that had to be painted on by someone to get there, but they won't ship them separately in one.
Prairie Grove Colt, Rick Colt.
So, uh, collections for the month of January was thirty-eight thousand one hundred and thirty-two dollars, and a portion of that, uh, is twenty-one thousand eight oh three. For context, same month last year, collections was thirty-six thousand four oh two, uh, our portion was twenty thousand nine thirty-six. So about a thousand bucks or so different, now Larry, this won't be a surprise to you, if you look back the previous two years. They were considerably higher than what these two are, so we're still running at a deficit from where we were at. Year back three and four.
If we can run a thousand a month ahead, we'll put this five thousand at the end of the year.
Right.
That is not what we're looking at, so keep your focus on that.
Fire Department, Rick O.
I'll defer to, uh, Chief.
Well, my apologies, because it's not only this, uh, sitting here, but I did not send out the monthly report. Uh, but I'll get that to you next day as well. Uh, other than that, the, the.
Thank you, sir. Fox and Rock, Chris Powell.
Uh, crews working on the ball field, getting them ready for paintball season, uh, one of them is complete, they have one, uh, the other two are probably seventy percent complete.
Well, just an FYI, they recovered their kids when I came to the aid.
So they are in really good shape, uh, some of we dug down, that's a great engine, brought it all in dirt. Trying to get rid of gravel, some of the things that had added to it over the years. And we started using a new field conditioner, supposed to help with things like that, that we had to deploy. Going well, we installed a new handicap wheelchair swing, and all the new concrete and lamps and stuff up at muddy fork. The crews were putting together the, uh, picnic tables and benches, and installing them some of them today, as a matter of fact. And I'm looking at some rubber mat to go around the handicap swing, because it's all hard surface, you know, so they can get another, so I'm looking at a two-minute mask.
Chuck, we had a sign that said, no dogs except off-leash, except in the dog park. Can they put those back out, we've been getting lots of complaints about people turning their dogs, a lot of problems.
That's about it, oh, new sidewalk's going in, connecting, uh, side road to, we park a pool over there. Uh, it was part of their original plan, that they brought sidewalk to the edge of property, where it stops about two hundred and fifty feet from our pathway. So the guy wanted all that concrete, I think, for all, for all these street cuts.
That's gonna be well-used.
So there's, um, there's, are there those ones we got from, uh, Jake?
Those, the ones that I'm putting up at, uh, muddy fork right now, is part of that matching grant.
Oh, okay.
We have another thirty thousand dollars, basically, that we had to spend, and they would give us fourteen thousand eight hundred back. And so one of the things that we put in there, it it has to be done at muddy fork. So that's where the additional concrete, the extra swing, and, uh, the rubber mats gonna come from, and all the new. Table that we're putting together are actually gonna go to muddy fork, and the ones that are there, they're, one of them's gonna go to Mont Park, some of them's gonna go down to the, uh. Other playground.
Okay, cool.
Somebody had asked us for addition.
Park has asked us for.
Yeah. Hey Chuck, real, real quick on Mont Park, I noticed over the last week or so, the bathroom doors propped open a little bit, as we get Farmer's Market. Starting up in April, is there any, uh, maintenance or activity or anything at the rest rooms there at Mont Park?
They were painting and putting new countertops up in there, that's the reason, oh, that's been. The contractor replaced, some of the doors got installed, and new countertops and.
Perfect, thank you.
We also met with our ladies, uh, to redo flowers at Mont Park, and so that'll start.
And to go back to Rick, uh, the last week, we've added all the deep. Heading cages and everything, and that part with the school, uh, we supplied all the equipment and materials to the school, uh, and the labor. We, we don't.
On the, a day on the cover range for the city area?
We are actually looking at a sales type, sales structure, and making sure that we have a hose, you know, to handle it. And because we feel like it's going to be most economical. A lot of winds here on fifteen and I twenty. Looking at, either four-by-four field hose, and it's a problem, because there is going to be a couple twelve, or four forty foot long. And so twelve is not going to be quite long, and twenty's gonna be about forty-two long, so.
Hey Dr. Campbell, before we go to Parks and Recs, don't you have, uh, something coming over the field?
Yes, sir. We're starting running on, we have a tour of the, uh, dirt field. Invite you all to come out and see it. Free hot dogs.
Brand savings bank is.
Are you gonna be out there?
Hey, I'm free, free, yes, free.
I don't know if it is so good, but can we look for next year? Bring in four-year-olds. I know there's been some emails on that, but we're the only city who does not allow four-year-old people. So everybody's going outside of Prairie Grove completely.
So the herd and cat.
That's herd and cat thing.
We did.
So, so do we not do, just because we don't have the feels or the time?
Hey, and I don't know the answer to this, but I'd say it's probably Washington Civic League.
I mean, it's advertised on there is the, you know, Elkins, Farmington, Lincoln, we are the only ones.
And if, if Washington County Civic League is allowing four-year-olds, usually we do whatever Washington County Civic League does, so I don't know.
I, I came from a municipality that had a, what they called a band bino league with four-year-olds. And it was, uh, Saturday mornings and it was only for four weeks. So.
Right.
And, uh, basically you bet all the way there, you go to keep score and everybody gives. And an hour and fifteen minute time, you might make it through there twice. And so everybody's a bad one.
We need to look into it.
That we have to do it on like a Saturday morning away from our regular game times because they are completely.
Shane and Shane is the new coordinator of the.
Yeah, he's the new coordinator.
You might talk to him and find out what the rest of the league is doing because usually all of our guidelines are the civic games guidelines.
He says that, I'm asking him about playing Washington Civic League. Is there anything going to those meetings? Spring break to June.
And they can't play at four, going for a, in the four to five.
What field is leaving in June? What field is leaving in June? What, is it the baseball thing?
No, we're not, we're not losing anything in June. This is just, this is future field house, different stuff. That, that may be a few, there may be some time. We got some time to worry about that.
I just wanted to stop you.
So Bree, are we okay to, to, to just continue to talk about, because I think John, I'm sorry, John, most people have probably already got that.
Next year, but we are raising quite a bit of money.
So we definitely will reach out to our coordinator and see what they talk about, the thing that goes with the leagues that set up the leagues.
So is everyone else just ignoring or it's changed? Well, they don't have to prove their age anymore. If so, people wanna overlook that, they probably could. We don't collect.
I got a, I got a forty-three-year-old that may have jumped into the middle lane. Don't, don't pet incident must ask.
That's all.
Please to fall, Ms. Doug Stumble.
First chief. You see, I didn't understand, I waited on J C to say his out. This is a partner deal, everyone talks, so, um, not busy, uh, our guys and gals. All are no short of man, unfortunately, placing, placing business is good, um. Other than that, there's related.
Still have one in the academy, don't you chief?
What's that?
And there one's still in the academy?
Yes, we do got one in Camden, these guys. It's, it's approaching a halfway moment, so, um, we've got it open now, so we're trying to start that process of doing it. Hopefully we can get you to the next academy, send somebody to that academy, but sending the team off into. It's a five and a half hour drive one way and costs a lot more money and it is more difficult when we have to do that, but. Fortunately, they only do academies, um, certain days and if you're in that, in that timeframe, you just, you know. With state law, you gotta send somebody to the academy within that timeframe, you just gotta use whatever one's open, fortunately, so.
Thank you, chief. Long-range plan and Bree Greg.
Um, sorry. Yes, we discussed the reason I wanted conditionally experiment for storage. Another one we had was conditionally experiment, the operator car lot at thirty-one hundred East Carrier Perp Bay. In V two by William Willis. That is the spotted hen or.
Rustic, rustic.
Rustic hen.
Rooster, something else.
It's the new black building on the other side of the. I never doubted, yes. Uh, it's a car dealership that's currently operating in here.
No.
Or where did they say? Here, okay. Um, and they're just wanting a second location for used vehicle sales. And we.
You did a vacation.
Do what?
Did you do a vacation rental?
Didn't we do the vacation?
Yes, yes, we did. Uh, Brad Smith.
Well, they started early and y'all know I'm not there early. So, yes, there must have been, I'm gonna defer to J C or one of the other.
And Brad, we discussed the month before, you know, the month before.
No, we were at municipal.
So you weren't there in anything? Well, we'd actually discussed it a month previous because it was, except Brad thought he was gonna need that tool and hidden. But basically it's a new construction house down on Product Street. And he's been renting it for short-term rentals, but it's been mostly people that are in between account sales and that sort of thing as opposed to vacation. Type rentals. He's had, uh, some families with emergencies, like a fire and that sort of thing that he rented too as well, but, uh. That's basically what it is. It's a brand new beautiful house. Wasn't any other vacation rentals.
Thank you, Bree. Senior citizens, follow the dipwads.
They were scheduled to start on construction today. I don't know, I mean, by then. No, but I went to them. Anyway, and, um. Um, Thursday is bingo and I think they have a dance that night too.
Yeah, they had a pre-production meeting Friday, but Lance wasn't there to get to the baseball.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I saw that. But they're rocking and rolling.
Thank you, Paula. Library, Tony Cunningham.
For those that don't frequent the library on a regular basis, uh, Megan and Amanda, each month will put out a list of. All the books, new books that are coming in, the movies that you can check out, everything's going on down there, so. You can go by and find out what's going on down there. And. That's all I had under that section.
All right, so let's move to announcements.
I do have a couple of announcements. Saturday morning, down at the, uh, Masonic Lodge Hall, we'll be doing breakfast again from six till ten. So, uh, we always try to stay away from your second Saturday. And, uh, it's a good breakfast. And the other thing I have is for, we are now in the second week of early voting. So if you like to avoid the crowds, please stop by down by the. J C was generous enough to let us bar where he keeps the big red trucks. And if you'll come in down there on the north end, we can get you voted just like that.
It's, it's just for the rest of this week.
Uh, through Friday and then of course the election day is Tuesday, March the fifth. And we'll be at the, uh, church out by the liquor store and we'll be there from seven thirty to seven. And that'll be from seven thirty to seven thirty.
Is that, is that yours right now, seven thirty, seven thirty?
No, sir, we are eight to six.
All right. Eight to six, Monday through Friday, seven thirty, seven thirty, at the church by the liquor store on Saturday.
That'll be Tuesday, March.
We're also getting a new bookstore in Prairie Grove. Did you know that? New and used books.
Where?
In front of Flowers and Friends. Their front part of their building.
Fox and Fable.
Yeah.
Fox and Fable. Another ribbon gun coming? Another ribbon gun coming?
I'm sure.
And I understand you're getting an Italian restaurant coming to town.
Yes, we are. It is an Italian restaurant working. And they are currently in Berryville and for anyone who's ever ate there, it is, it is really, really good. And so we understand that it's the same people, same owners. And so we should have us a nice little Italian restaurant downtown Prairie Grove. Don't, don't move just quick. Once again, Saturday, um, from eleven to one, free hot dogs and you get to walk the, the new turf field. At the Prairie Grove football field and going into next month, spring break is from the eighteenth to the twenty-second. So your council meeting will be the following Monday, March twenty-fifth. Any other announcements? Oh, yeah, heck, yeah. Uh, I'm just looking for a motion to adjourn. We're so moved. Thank y'all.